To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is great. Dear Father, we come to you today, thank you for another opportunity to live another day. Thank you for the blessings that you bless us with each day and thank you for giving us guidance and direction in our life. I pray that you do the same in this meeting today. Let your presence be here and help us to make decisions and be best with our city and the people here in this city. I pray that you watch over us, care for us, and guide us in all that we do. Well, I know you thank for your love for us. In Jesus' name.
Good to see everybody here. I think we're right out from our county in Troy. And really thank you for showing up tonight as well as the residents and other officials. Really good to see you here. But this time I'm going to ask Mr. LaShawn if he had any road calls.
Alderman Betts, President. Alderman Doray, President. Alderman Gardner, I know to be absent at this time. Alderman McCoy, President. Alderman Probst, here. Have a cord, Mayor.
Okay. We're now in session. Before we begin to the agenda, I would just like to set the table that the Louisiana Local Governor Budget Act requires that, working with open meeting law, that we prepare a comprehensive budget which represents a complete financial plan for the ensuing year for general and special revenue funds. The adopted budget must be balanced with approved expenditures not exceeding the total of estimated funds available. And this forms the framework from which we operate and monitor revenues and expenditures throughout the year. And this requires funding for a whole year, can't be a partial year. You have to fund the whole year. That's one of the requirements. So, at that time, do I hear motion, we enter to the public hearing on ordinance adopting town of a day operating budget for 2018, 19 fiscal year. Motion made by Alderman Probst. I hear second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Doray, on the favor.
Aye.
Okay. We're in public session. Any questions on the budget? On the floor.
I have questions. Let me get my questions along. So, my first question is, during our last meeting, we closed public comment, but I was a little confused if we were going to address each item separately or if public comment will be closed at the beginning like it was the last time.
It will be closed. Once you have public comment as far as the beginning of the, and then the left, what's left over is for deliberation amongst y'all. And that's what's called public comment section. Why we have a public comment section if it's open to the public call during the deliberation of your, and that's why it works that way. I certainly want to give everybody enough time to speak. I've looked at a lot of municipalities, some of them require a pretty limited time limit and some municipalities don't, some people, you know, as far as having a question for you. And, you know, I won't be more generous than that. If somebody has a question, we certainly will try to answer them. So, that's why we observe this time of interest. The budget's been out there for review and if there's individual questions, we have no problem trying to answer them, sorry, on any line or whatever.
Well, I have a couple of questions. I noticed that the hydro rebates aren't listed in the budget as well as the, I don't see anything for streets. So, what is the plan for that?
Same way we did last year, is to go through a complete year and we also get the complete calculation of what the plan generated at this time. We don't know what that number is. You can estimate it, you can get close probably. But we feel like, and my opinion is, is the way we did it last year, to set it up that way each year, is to, and once we get those final numbers set up in public hearing, the way the ordinance sets and have those meetings and let the people be involved in how they want the money is first. So, that's my, that's my personal feeling on it.
And what about the streets? Is the same thing for the streets?
Pardon?
The streets, because I didn't see, I might have missed it, but I did not see anything where we have listed for streets or street projects and things that, street repairs.
Well, this year, what we're, what we have set aside is, we have set aside a $500,000 capital outlay that is showing up in the utility fund. However, we, what we want to do is, and this is my, this is my first opinion, if y'all don't want to change it, we can do that. You can try to earmark it for things, but on an as-needed basis, things need to be brought to us. And if it's something that's critical that needs to be done, we'll certainly get it done, whether it's purchase of mowers for a certain department, whether it's fixing a street. Those monies are there. For example, we've got some serious repairs which we need on Boy Lane. John Dale Drive, guys here, the contractor who fixed that, will come back and fix that. River's still too high. Busy with Mark and Lee. We rode around this week and we're starting to address some of those concerns, because there are some streets that didn't make some repairs, right? And if those, and if those streets need, if we're, if we ever go to WGM, we can fix those, we're going to start to do that.
The roads around the IT Center are kind of earmarked in that with what we're trying to do.
Yes, yes. We're looking at those as well.
Another question that I have, anybody else have a question? Just maybe. The other questions that I have, can you give me an estimate of concessions specific to Project Pencil, including what we will lose on taxes, infrastructure, and that sort of, what we're looking at on that?
Well, my opinion is, you're not going to lose. That's my, that's my opinion. That was, I, the numbers were, I'm trying to remember. Heather, do you remember the number tax? I think it was something like $6,000 at the town itself. Is that correct?
That sounds...
As far as, that's what the town actually itself will receive, but the, but the benefit that we will receive from the sale of utilities to the company is going way more than compensate, you know. As far as any kind of expenditures, as far as any expenditures for Project Pencil, there's nothing in this budget other than something that's going to go to the port anyway. We have to extend the gas line from Whitehall Plantation to the port. And that, there's no gas at the industrial park at this time.
So, is that specific to Project Pencil?
Pardon?
Is that specific to Project Pencil?
No, ma'am. I said to the port.
It's specific to the port?
To the, to the industrial park, which is the port and industrial park that area.
And so, where does the gas line go from the port?
From the port, it goes to the industrial park into the port.
To...
You go from Whitehall Plantation?
Yeah, I said Whitehall.
It goes to Whitehall Plantation, from Whitehall Plantation to the port?
Right.
And that's it? It just goes from there to the, how much will that cost, the city of Vidalia, that gas line?
I think that's going to be done on the port, the port funds and I'm thinking, I think the quote on that was $200,000.
And is that something that will be covered in grants or will be cut, will the city be...
That's, that's already in the port funds. It's already, it's already been allocated, the money's there.
So, that's...
Comes from the state.
It comes from the state, but will that be something that we have to match? If it's a, if it's a grant, will we have to match that 25%?
I don't think that's...
50%?
I have to let Guy or Heather answer that.
So, we are actually applying for a DRA grant to cover this.
I can't hear you, Heather.
We are actually applying for a DRA grant to cover that cost, to match our port funds, because it will be an infrastructure extension to maximize the industrial park and port complex. There is a 25% match requirement for that grant and every other grant that we have, but there's options to match DRA funds with state funds, which we have for the port as well.
So, we will not be signing any kind of promissory notes, the way that we did with Elastomer?
Absolutely not. I'm not signing a promissory note for any company coming.
Okay, well, let us get to that. And so, then when we have these, will there be benchmarks set in place for this company, you know, to reach in order that they don't have to pay anything back? I mean, I'm just trying to cover all bases. I'm trying to understand how these grants work and how it benefits the city. Exactly.
Well, I mean, this will provide jobs and we're also going to be utility, we'll definitely be an income position.
Well, speaking of utilities, that brings me to another question about Project Pencil. They're a 24-hour-a-day operation. So, in the winter, we experienced intergy telling us, you know, we needed to have rolling blackouts if we didn't cut our power use. Now, I know it wasn't really a problem with BASF because they don't run 24 hours a day. How would that affect the city of Vidalia and would you need more electric and infrastructure for that?
Not at this time, but I will tell you that BASF was rolling that morning and we did shut them down.
Okay. But I mean, for...
But the residents comfort in the event that you were to have any kind of problem. I think as I said before, Mark showed up that morning and they had already turned BASF, you know, started shedding load before they all met and shed load on us, but that's...
But no new electrical infrastructure needed for that? And that would not tax out Vidalia Road?
We are, we are looking, because the port is coming on and there's going to be some growth. We are looking into a substation and already talking and talking different.
How much would a new substation cost?
That's, I, I, five, six million. I mean, just telling that out there. I mean, but that's not something that's down the road, that's the future. That's for redundancy and Jeremy can actually answer more to that, probably. Is Jeremy here? I thought, I think I saw him earlier. Jeremy, is that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
But that would be something that would be, that we would manage, that if we had that kind of industry company, that'd be great. You can certainly find us any kind of improvement like that.
Well, it's certainly something to think about, you know, having to spend that much more money if they are going to tax out the electric system, which it seemed like in the winter, we were already taxed with just the number of people that we have. So, it's definitely something to keep in mind.
Just for clarification, if the city of Vidalia was maxed out, MISO and the grid was maxed out, Vidalia was not maxed out. This was a, all through the south, Vidalia was not maxed out, just for clarity there. So, Vidalia was fine. They were going to shed load and sell.
Yes, so we were asked to shed load because we were part of an enormous load. So, if we're adding to that enormous load, why wouldn't we be asked again?
That's not, that's not going to have anything to do, I'm sorry, that's not, that's not going to have anything to do. If it comes from MISO, I mean, it doesn't matter, Westland, Oklahoma, Arkansas, I mean, industry, there's going to be industry somewhere running, so it's, I don't know if we're going to shed a lot of that.
The other question that I have for you on the budget is, can you explain the capital project fund and the $6.2 million plus the engineering costs of $480,000? How we're going to come up with $480,000 and why we didn't take, why we're allowing Project Blue to get away with not paying, we're conceding $487,000 per our last budget, $487,500. So, why would we not collect that if we're going to be due $487, $480,000 for engineering costs?
That's the engineering for the port.
Right, I understand that, so, but that is what we have to match, right? That's what the citizens are responsible for, is that correct?
That's in the budget and we can, we are, our budget balancing, taking into account expansion and considerations.
Yes, but we're already borrowing money to pay our bills, so how can we take on $480,000?
We're not, we're paying. The notes will be paid off, not going to have to borrow money.
But we're already borrowing money?
We have borrowed, we're paying it off here soon.
Did Project Blue close and sign the papers?
Paper's been signed.
Papers have been signed.
I don't think we should shut anybody down on that, but LMD has requested us not discuss it until they do their press release. So, I'm sorry if I don't, newspapers forgive me, but I've been instructed not, this is something they want to handle out of their office in Louisiana State. There's a lot of things pulled together and so, very excited.
Why so much secrecy about it?
Well, I'm sorry, we were under confidential, we're under confidential agreement, there's nothing, there's nothing scary about this, this company. There's a lot of things, believe it or not, I'm kind of glad because I wouldn't want somebody to come and snatch them out and knock them a lot more than what they're getting from us, which is taxes and things.
How much longer will the citizens of Vidalia be responsible for paying those electric bills for that Project Blue? For the first going bill?
We're going, we're going to receive that closed. We're going to receive $450,000 closed and a balance over be paid annually over five years.
I thought you closed today, no?
When we received them, well, yes, when the funding is closed, but the funding...
So, it's not closed because the funding hasn't been done?
Yes, that's, it has, it's been signed, okay? I don't want to go and explain the lending process to you, how this works, especially with a loan dismanaging.
It's not just me, it's everybody.
Okay, I mean, if somebody else would like to, I mean, I'd be glad to explain it. I mean, if y'all want to go into it, that kind of detail with our budget, this is, but we are getting the money, it's going to, we're going to have the money funded.
Well, it is part of our budget. I mean, it's, it is part of our budget. It is what we're factoring in.
Okay. I, I grant it, but I mean to explain, explain the procedure of USDA loans, SDA loans, then a loan dismanaging, $30 million loan of the closing and the things that have to step to have to go through. I'm sorry, I was going to say with importance of that tonight, other than to tell you it's going to happen and it's going to close and we'll be funded.
Well, I think it's important for everyone here to understand because this is the economic health of our city. So, I mean, I do feel it's important for myself to understand and for everyone to understand, you know. So, for the rest of the $6.2 million in engineering costs, what will that cover? What exactly will that $6.2 million cover? And how, all of that is grant?
I see our board director here, Pete Capda Dunn and Guy Murray with Brian Hamler Associates, who are the engineers and also the board directors, so I want to let them, if you'd like to listen to one of those guys, I'll tell you how this is going to be handled.
Could you repeat the question?
$6.2 million of...
That's a, that's a contract that's under construction.
What will that be used for? What exactly?
It's a dry bulk conveyor.
A dry bulk conveyor?
That's correct.
Is that it?
Yes.
Do you know what a dry bulk conveyor is? Do you know whether $6.2 million is an appropriate number for that?
I, I do not. I'm trying to understand what that is. That's hence the question.
Do you know what it is?
Yes, I know.
Why don't you explain, why don't you explain to her?
I don't need to.
Well, she's asking the question, you bonged in the...
Okay.
I'll explain what dry bulk conveyor is. It's an elevated, own pilings with a dump pit. It's just like a typical grain leg that you would see at an export elevator.
So, this is...
It can handle any dry bulk material. And dry bulk is, as opposed to brake bulk, brake bulk would be steel pipe. Dry bulk would be like a bag of sand, a bag of grain.
And what, what is it, because I'm just trying to understand, what, what do we...
You moved from point A to point B.
Thanks, Mr. McDonald, I appreciate that. So, what industry will that, that's just from the port and where will it go from the ports?
It depends on the material that you're handling. Primarily, this is an agricultural area, so it will probably handle mostly grain or either agricultural product, other agricultural products such as wood pellets or something to that extent. The grain would mostly go to export elevators because most of the mid-south grain that comes off goes to export because it's the earliest grain in the northern hemisphere.
Okay, so the $6.2 million will go to that dry bulk?
6.2 is a portion, approximately 1.74 million has already been expended in construction. We've put in most of the landside pilings. The pilings are to support the superstructure or the grain conveyor itself and connect to the dump pit.
Okay. So, that's what I really want to understand because, well, we say we have the 6.2 and then the $480,000. The 6.2...
$480,000 is for project management and engineering facilities.
I'm just trying to figure out if that $480,000 will be something that A, the citizens of Vidalia have to pay for?
Yes.
Okay. And B, will the citizens of Vidalia be responsible for all of the upkeep and maintenance on this project?
No. No, we're in the process of developing an RFP for terminal management. There are 32 ports in the state of Louisiana. It's the most maritime state in the nation. Most, all of those ports operate as landlord ports. In other words, they either build or construct facilities or lease out the facility and the land, or the land by itself. So, others will operate and be responsible for maintenance, repairs and maintenance.
Okay, I appreciate your very respectful answer. That's nice.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions down in the floor?
I may not be finished at all.
Anybody else? Captain, any question you have? Okay. All right, going once. All right, no public questions from the public, we're going to close. Public comment, do I hear a motion to that effect?
I think most of them closed public comment.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, I hear second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Betts, on the favor.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Now, we'll go to number two, which is the board consideration of ordinance adopting town of a day operating budget for 2018, 19 fiscal year. You want to start discussion then amongst the board or if you're going to make a motion with a second, have discussion after, before a vote, watch how it's played.
We can go ahead and start the discussion.
Okay.
Um, and I believe we've asked this question before, but I want to reiterate. It's my understanding that within your budget, you did not include the retention payment for employees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you not intend to give retention payments to the employees during this fiscal year?
If we have the money, I would intend, I hope that we can do that.
Why would you not go ahead, if that is a priority of yours, to give those to the employees, why would you not budget that in, in the beginning and make certain that it was available?
Because if that's available, I would be certain that y'all would approve it to give to them at that time and then us...
But by approving this budget with that included, we would be approving the retention payment agreement.
Well, we could, but then again, there were some employees that didn't accept the retention payments and we wouldn't know what that is. We'd find out next time, a little earlier if we have the money, which one wanted to have what that money dollar amount would be, so...
And the same line of questions with the hydro rebates. I know that you said that you don't know what it is or what it will be, however, this entire budget is projections.
That's correct.
So, why would this not, if you intend to give hydro rebates, why would you not make that a priority in the budget and make sure that it was included as a projection, just like absolutely everything else in this budget?
Because when the hydro, when it's finished up, the year's completed, I'd rather have an exact number that we can, we can allocate part. Well, I guess at it, when we, when we can wait, like we did last time, get the actual numbers and have meetings, have public meetings, rather than just trying to guess what it's going to be. I don't know what those last, that last month's generate could be to, to the hydro. I don't know how many times they had to do gate changes, they didn't produce the full effect, there's a lot of things that could happen.
But you do have historical data that could give you information with which to, to include that in the budget and make that a priority of the red.
I know there's historical information out there, but it's just, that's what it is. I mean, that's what has happened in the past, but I don't mean that's going to be that way tomorrow. I mean, so I would rather, and I know why it's a problem, on waiting till we get to with our year and get all our final numbers in and seeing then what we can put in as a rebate to the customer and get through our fiscal year, look at our budget.
The reason that I believe that it is an issue is that if the retention payments for your employees is something you intend to do and the rebates for your customers are something that you, you know, for the customers of Vidalia is something you intend to do, then why would that information not be included in the budget and, and put in there first?
Well, I can tell you that because number one, if you put it in there now, if I was in, we had time for that potential payment, they're going to expect it, whether it's there or not. If we don't have the money, it's not going to be there. So, why would you put it in there and they're going to be expecting it if it's in there and we don't have the money to do it? I don't, I don't see the problem with that. I would rather wait and if we have the money then, at that time, I hope y'all will tell you that, we have the money to do that for them.
During the meetings that we had, both with you in attendance and with just Mr. Murray, Mr. LaShawn and Ms. Mo, some of the things that were discussed that were planning to be done within this budget, is a reduction in salary, employees making more than $50,000 or $60,000 per year of a 5%. Was that done within this budget? That was a suggestion that y'all made. Was that done in this budget?
That was a suggestion that we talked about. We, we talked about a lot of things in the comprehensive, you know, ways to reduce this budget. Some of the aldermen said, you know, go away with overtime, some of the aldermen said do the cuts, and then we said, well, we talked about 5% and things of that nature. We talked with several of the department heads and officers and some of the other aldermen that was in there said they would rather make cuts and not see anybody have to take any cuts. And based on that, this, this budget does not reflect any pay cuts, does not reflect any of their loss of overtime or to any employee or officer.
That was another thing that you actually brought up in the meeting where you were in attendance, was the removal of the built-in overtime for your employees, rather than scheduling them nine hours per day. You wanted to remove that and make some of them clock out for lunch. That was a statement that you made.
I was, that was a statement I made, and there was another, there was a statement I made was that I would rather go ahead and make that part of their salary and do away with calling it overtime, whatever that is, make that their pay, they're expecting that.
That's not what you said.
Okay, I'm sorry. You missed...
I'll second that because we did say that we would like to see that because that affects their, not just their overtime. No overtime affects their retirement. Overtime does not, and we said, don't say, I was there. Overtime does not affect their retirement, it does not go into their retirement, but a salary goes into their retirement. That's what we would like to see. That's exactly what we would like to see.
I would say...
We would like to have the money given to them, but if we're going to give it to them, give it to them and pay raise, not in overtime.
Okay.
That is right. Now, I'll make that fair.
Okay, our CPA was there with us, I mean, I put them in the middle. But did, but did we not say that, did I say that if we did that, I would rather make that their part of their pay and do away with overtime? I said...
Well, then let's do it. That's fine with me. I never did say that, I'm telling you.
All right.
And now, you might, we might have had a misunderstanding, but I said, and I've told some of the employees out there, overtime counts nothing towards your future. Money counts toward your future. So, we're, we're in agreement now, since we're here all together. Correct? Anybody else?
Mark, the ones that I talked with employees directly, didn't I tell you, didn't I explain what taking it as overtime would do as far as your retirement? When you take your pay in part of it and overtime, town's not having to match that. Of course, now, when I go into it and we match that, I don't, hey, look, I'm glad, whatever you made on your W-2 and then closed your overtime, I'm all for keeping your money the same and your real overtime will be your real overtime. But after this meeting, I don't want to get back there and say, well, you know, how'd you calculate that? Are you giving them all that overtime?
I want to make a statement too.
Hundred percent.
It's not about, it's not about wait, we did, it's your responsibility to spread that budget. We just give you that budget so you can spread it to whoever you want to and whoever's important can get that money. But again, it's up to you to spread it. It's not, and only we give it to you. So, I just want that understanding. You spread it, we give it, okay?
This, when we go in to do this, it's going to, it's going to change the calculation a little bit with putting the retirement in on to it. Are y'all okay with that?
I just said, well, as long as you spread it right, because don't put that on us if you can't make it, just like, I'm going to make another statement, just like if you don't have enough money to give their money to them in the end of the year, that's not our problem, that's your spending problem. So, they are not important, is what I see. So, I don't know. If you got, you got to control your spending, in my opinion. That's just my opinion, just like you said, that's your opinion. We have to control spending. So they are not important, is what I see, so, I don't know. If you got, you got to control your spending, in my opinion. That's just my opinion, just like you said, that's your opinion. We have to control spending, and there are certain people that spend more than others. So who's important is where you spend now. Certain things have to be done, but how you spend it is not up to us. We give it to you, you spend it how you want to. Is that correct?
Yeah.
We have nothing to do with it. Who gets what? But again, going back to, just like we said, on the overtime, I wouldn't mind having, I don't have a problem with them. We didn't say you can trade, we didn't say anything about that. We said we would like to see that in the check. And now, whether we misunderstood each other, whatever, I told them, that's what I said, maybe, and maybe it was something different, whatever we communicated, now we're communicating. Why don't we?
All right.
So what are you saying, Tom? You want to cut out the overtime, or what? What are you saying?
What am I saying?
Do you want to cut out the overtime, or what?
I want to see it go to the check. I want to see it where it amounts to-
So what are we making on overtime, are you going to increase our pay by that?
I didn't say that, that's up to him. I don't increase pay, I don't increase hours, I don't determine how you work, that's his responsibility.
Here, I'll say what I wanted to say, what my intention was. I know that Mayor Kraft told several people, several employees in this town, that I personally was trying to cut the overtime, and that is a lie.
I heard mine as a misconception too.
That is a lie, and it is not true, that is not something that we said we wanted to do. In the meeting that I had, I'm not going to call it a misunderstanding, because in the meeting that I had with Mayor Kraft, he went on and on about how nine hours were scheduled for your work day, and that some departments are not clocking out for lunch, and he wanted to get that under control. I will not say there was a miscommunication in the discussion about overtime. What I will say is that what the statement that was made, that I am trying to cut your overtime, is a lie. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, well, did you, was that, would I be lying if I said that you said that every employee in this town is overpaid?
Yes, you would be lying. What I said was, no, what I said was, is we are top heavy. That is what I said.
I mean, since you can call me a liar, I'm going to put this right there. You said every employee in this town is overpaid, that's what you said.
That is absolutely not true, and I have recordings of every meeting, and I was prepared-
Please play that again.
Absolutely.
You got to meet with me and our CPA, and I would love for you to play that.
Absolutely. Is that the same meeting where you said that I needed therapy? Is that the same meeting where you personally attacked me? Is that the same meeting where you threatened to have me charged with malfeasance if I didn't catch your budget?
I didn't tell you.
Which meeting? You didn't, you came to office and told me that.
That, was that, that meeting when you said that?
No, I'm asking you which meeting when you said that, because we've had several.
The one that we had today, the last one, you never had.
I've never said that everybody in this town was overpaid. That is never a statement that I've made.
Okay, all right, well, okay. All right, we can agree to disagree, but there was three people there, and two of us hurt, I mean, so.
Well, either way, it's my opinion, I said a misunderstanding. Have we got it? Have we communicated what we want to do? That's the thing.
I would like to, I'll, I'll say this. Personally, this is me. I'm embarrassed for adults to ask.
John, I'll tell you what, at least I'll say something, that's all I can say.
But what I'm saying is, but what I'm saying is, you can say things, you can do things and get things done without this.
We've tried, John.
Now, my question is to you, all right, what overtime are you talking about? Are you talking about the scheduled overtime being part of their, their pay, or are you talking about all the overtime that they, that they made in a year?
Let me tell you what I'm talking about. Do you know what overtime is?
Yes.
Maybe, tell me, okay, well, tell me what it is.
Well, that you work forty hours.
Okay, why is it necessary? Because that's what I, I had to do all my career, why is overtime necessary? What is it used for? Why is it even-
We have all kinds of emergency season, different things.
There you go. Okay, if you schedule overtime, then that can't be an emergency, can't, you said, that's right, it's not an emergency, but if we use overtime because of emergency or necessity, that's what you use overtime for. That's called overtime, but a schedule is not, that's why I say, let's put it in there, pay if we want to pay them that much, that's his determination, who he can pay, how much he can afford.
You're talking about the scheduled overtime, right?
I don't schedule overtime. Schedule time is, you just said it's an emergency.
I'm talking about the basis of how our employees are paid now.
I don't know, John, that's how he has to determine that. That's his responsibility, not mine. I hand him a budget, and he determines how he spreads it. I said that while he was-
Okay, I can, I can settle this right now, because see, look, I can say, I don't want anybody here to take, take that off what you made. Okay? So if you've got, if your overtime hours and what you make, with that one, that way you've got it on the time card, the way those departments are doing, will make part of your salary, and real overtime will be real overtime, period. And I'm good with that.
I'm good.
I'm fine with that.
I'm good.
Okay? So what I'm saying is, if you do have real overtime in there, you're still going to get that if you're called out to work, okay? It's not real overtime. But this stuff is built in because it's been done forever, I know it's been done for thirty, forty years, is that not right? I mean, they've always done it that way. It became part of their pay. Is that, am I portraying it wrong, or how many people in here were totally different? Did anybody here were totally different?
About the last ten, or forty-four years, about a hundred of them.
Okay, so all I'm saying is, what, you know, where do you call it that overtime, what it is going to cost us a little more, because now that overtime is going to be subject to, I mean, you still got to take hike on and all that, from my standpoint.
But it'll be beneficial to them.
Absolutely, and I'm, I'm all for that.
Mayor, what about the city services? Do you go, if you cut the overtime out, what are the, what are the citizens going to say about the city services?
No, you're not, no, you're not cutting, you're, you're-
Still going to work nine, but you're just not going to get a, uh-
No, you're going, you're going to work your regular hours, but everybody's going to start taking the lunch hour.
Okay.
We already take the lunch hour.
We work ten hours.
Yeah.
So we begin fifty hours.
You don't need to work in eight hours a day if you took out the extra overtime hour. So the eight hours of pay period with, uh, I mean, these guys can do a lot in eight hours.
I know everyone on purpose, so.
You would only be working eight hours a day with one.
Correct.
I know, I know I got into the public here, but go ahead, Ralph, and then-
I, I realize that, but also, the employees of this town, as far as this meeting is concerned, are, are just like the rest of us. I'm sorry I came in late, I didn't realize it was a five o'clock deal, I thought it was six o'clock, like the normal scheduling. But I have something very important to say, and it's not about overtime, it is about the budget that you've offered to approve. There are a number of problems with that budget that's going to mean that the first thing you do is going to put it out of compliance. And I, I don't know if the same passed today or not, when you got a closure on the deal, but you were dealing with a sixteen million dollar asset of this city that was never put on the books, and you're wanting to sell it, or will sell it, or have sold it, for four million or twelve million, however it works out. Either option there puts you well over the five percent requirement immediately. And you don't have to do something about that.
Well, I'm looking to do something about it, like, we got CPA sitting here, and our, our auditor right behind him, we'll let him kind of tell you how that was booked.
Well, I'm not proven.
Okay, well, I'm going to answer your question for you.
I can, I can prepare to, to show your folks, who are going to make this decision, where you're not in compliance with a number of laws. Uh, this, this young lady right here, a few minutes ago referenced a malfeasance in office charge, and just yesterday, I was placed in that position, where you told, or two, two of your aldermen reported that I had tried to convince them to vote no on this thing. I have many reasons to, to not have you vote no. And I've got an outline, and I intended to hand every one of you a copy of how it is out of compliance. It's in reference to-
Can we, can we back up, Ray, to one question at a time? You don't talk about the building, okay? Can we answer that before you go off on wherever you go?
Well, as, as I say, as I say, I would like to be heard out as to why you're out of compliance, and therefore why this meeting is a joke. You, you've got to comply with the law. It, it states its procedure. But, but for me to be implicated as, as putting your alderman in a risk of malfeasance and all, there's two of them, is just simply a-
They'll tell you that, Ray.
You know who I'm talking about.
I didn't tell you that.
They know who I'm talking about.
I said it wasn't coming out the way he said it.
It's not a miscommunication, correct?
So last week, we're out of compliance, we have an auditor, an elected auditor that would tell us that, not you.
They're going to tell you that, Buzz, they're going to tell you that.
Okay.
Uh, but, but, but you are misinterpreted in the thing about malfeasance and all, and you put two aldermen thinking that I'm, I'm trying to put them in risk. And it's exactly the same thing you do when you go to your office. I've had four experiences there, and you are very condescending to the public, very.
That's, that's the same thing that I've, I've heard before, Ray, but I don't think that, but I'm okay.
Well, maybe you don't think that, but if you've heard it before, you should listen to it.
Okay, all right, I've, I've heard some other things, but I will, I'll make that some. Let's move on. All right, any more discussion up to my office?
One thing I want to bring up, the budget, what is the budget? You said it's a what?
It is a, it is a-
A guy.
A guy. And it also appropriates funds for, for us to run our town, and monitor our revenue and expenses.
So we can either adjust the budget up or down, correct? We can amend it to go either way, right?
Yes, but what we've got here is the operating budget for us to be able to pay our bill, right?
That's why I want to say, why would you not put their retention payment in there? Why would you not put the rebate in there? And if it's not enough, then why would we not adjust that, instead of us coming back and amending it like we had to do last year? Because I would say, if I had a budget, I had to put everything, I had to give them what I want for the year, and that's what I'm saying, and if I didn't make it, or that it, it didn't get spent.
If y'all want to put it in, we'll put it in, hey, look, we'll pay it.
Okay, and that five hundred dollars, that five hundred thousand dollars, we need to break it down as to how you intend to spend. That's, I'd like to budget it out, where it's broken down, where it's going to be spent.
Well, we don't know.
Not in a month, not, well, I mean, but budget it to fix the streets. Spend two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand on streets, two hundred thousand or whatever, or break it down, however you want to break it, but let's budget it to the place where we know where it's going to be spent, we have an idea of what it's going to be, then we spend it that way. And if we don't, you come back to us and say, we're going to need to adjust this.
I, I have a problem with that. But, I mean, I will say that there's things that's going to come up, where it breaks, and we're going to have to do that.
That's not, that's, that's what a budget is about. But that's why we have to amend it also, every, every time, because we're not placing where it needs to be, or couldn't be where we think it needs to be. So that's my sorrow on that. But I still say the retention period, the retention payment, the hydro fund, need to be put in there, and put priority to get that to the system. That's number one, that hydro, it may be more, and, and we did it for the first time last year, but again, we, not since we've been in office, but the thing is, it needs to be in there, so we have a focus on, this is important, or if it's not, then we don't see us saving that money. So, again, it's all up to you how you spend and spread it, but that's, it's up to us to produce that, what we want you to do that with.
Deborah and I have been, and we, we, I personally would like to see us wait on those, but if y'all want to do that, well, but you're not going to know what that amount is.
I think it's, and I, Wes, I talked to Wes, I talked to the legislative auditor about that, and if it's not something that you can reasonably estimate, there's nothing wrong with waiting till you amend the budget to do this, after you have the meetings to discuss if y'all are even going to be willing, because y'all have the opportunity to pay zero up to twenty, is it, how much is it? Fifty percent of the amount that's available. We don't know during the year, or even at the time this budget was done, I had no way of knowing what that amount would be, because there was still another payment that had to be made, and I do not have the history to estimate, because even if I did go back to the last year to look at it, to see what, it wouldn't be the same amount. It's never consistent to be a figure like that.
You're talking about the retention payment, or you're talking about-
No, I'm talking about the hydro allowances.
Okay, but why should I get them, then to address the retention payment? Why would we put that in there? Is it going to be pretty close, pretty close?
Well, the mayor, he asked to not put it in there, because, you know, he was trying to cut back, and trying to see where we were going to be, he, um, you know, and so that was his way of not putting it in there, but getting y'all-
We're going to cut back on the employees, not the certain other thing.
No, that's not what I said.
But that's, but I'm just saying, that's what we need to look at, and that's why it needs to be in there.
I intend to pay the retention payment, the money's there.
They're two different things. They're two different things.
There's other ways to cut it. My point, my point is, there's other ways to cut, and there are ways to bring the budget down. That's my feeling.
Can I, can I, can I go, since, I was, I was going to pull out some points here. From the time we took office in two short years, from the, from the budget that we were given when we came into office, at present, with this budget here, you back out capital outlet, any kind of port project, anything that was allocated, capital outlet, pull that out and look at it, we are eighteen percent cheaper in two years than before when we took office. If you want to put that dollars and cents, that's six million, seven hundred and five dollars, that's pretty substantial when you came in two years.
What was our budget when you came in office? What was the, what was the budget when you came into office?
The total budget? Uh, I can tell you the total expenditures were, uh, well, after capital, before, after capital outlet was thirty-six million, and if you pull out the capital outlet of the port, which is six one two and the five hundred thousand that we have in there, we're down to twenty, twenty-nine thousand, we're at a hundred and eighty-six thousand. That's what's in this new budget that we presented.
But I'm just asking, you're saying we were, we were twenty-nine thousand, but now we're proposing thirty-six thousand?
No, no, we were at thirty-six when we came in office.
So, and what's our, proposed, what did you say, Sprenger?
It was a thirty-five, when we came in, it was thirty-five million.
I got thirty-six million, ninety-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-
It's thirty-five, then I heard, and I'm talking from the audits themselves, thirty-five, thirty-one, we went back up to thirty-six point eight, and this one is thirty-six point zero eight.
That's counting, you count port loans in there, so. I said excluding that, because when you say, we're giving that six billion, but you're also expensing it, so you got, you're getting that money too. I'm backing out capital outlet.
We need to do that across the budget then, because the same is true with supplemental wages for your firemen in the police department.
That's right.
They're in and they're out. We need to do the same thing for the police units, that it's in as income and it's out as expenses. If we're going to do that, we need to do that across the board, to give a true figure.
We didn't, we didn't have that in there. The supplemental pay is in there for revenue.
You, I know, have you backed all of that out too? Like you backed out capital outlet and the boards?
No, I have not done that.
But that's what she's talking about doing, is backing it out.
I'm, I'm, okay, I, I, I see what you're saying, but I'm just on the operational, I'm, I'm, okay, I, I, I see what you're saying, but I'm just on the operational, 'cause that really got all your operational, that's the savings in there, though.
But still, it's no cost to the city, you know? No different than that's no cost to the, to the board.
But it's still, it's a true fashion how much we cut.
Let me ask you this, with the cuts that you've made, with, you know, let's, let's say twenty-nine million, which is a great job, I applaud you for that, great job. Is that enough to reduce the utility rates for the customers in town we were begging for?
I'm glad you asked that. Let me, uh, we didn't have a plan, believe it or not, we have had one.
I wish y'all would go back to that four-hour schedule overtime, y'all got derailed after y'all were on that bucket about the money. You wanna, y'all were talking about the four-hour schedule, make your party pay, and then all of a sudden you got derailed and all the paperwork you was gonna give.
Oh, I understand, it's gonna be...
I never finished that.
It's gonna be made party salary, and you'll start accumulating, uh, your time on it. Okay, this is from Rick Knowles and Associates, who was doing the rate study, and I'm gonna read the letter, it's not that long.
Look, can I say one thing? I think what you're talking about four hours, call it?
No, sir. Four hours, y'all were just talking about schedule, which is four hours per week.
What he's talking about, I think, I think what he's talking about, just clarify, you're talking about what has been increased. That's what he's talking about, only, the other part of it remain overtime. I think that's what his plan. Does that clarify, Gordon?
No, what y'all say is we're not gonna lose anything.
What you're gonna say?
What's, what's being talked about, we're not gonna lose anything?
No, no. You're just, you're gonna be handling our time card a little bit. Through overtime, through overtime.
Are you regular time paid, or?
Overtime paid. Whatever your total paid was with that in there is gonna be your pay, and it's gonna be roughly out over the year. There you go, it's regular pay.
We won't lose anything.
You're not gonna say anything crazy in your chat.
We're gonna go to eight hours days.
Yes.
They're gonna have a meeting, we're not gonna have, and that'll be adjusted.
That's correct. July one, that friendly.
So, the total of like hours, wherever he...
Yes.
Okay, nevermind, I'm not gonna...
I'll be glad, look, individually, y'all, if y'all wanna come in and sit down and say, okay, how that's gonna fix you, that's no problem, okay?
Don't even get to that park, don't even get to that park, don't get to do that, finish that.
And you said and made a statement, if we approve the budget, but still, no, it's still gonna be, maintain what we got, even if we don't approve it. I just wanna be sure, we clarify, if we approve the budget, or if we don't approve the budget, that's not gonna affect you.
That's what we're all concerned, is if we're gonna lose anything, I mean...
That's what he's saying, I didn't say it, that's what he's saying.
We understand. Yeah, we have the means of trouble, I think, he makes the decisions.
That's right.
We got that.
That's right.
All right, let me read this from Mr. Knowles. Following our telephone conversation, please find and attach a brief report of the status of our work with the city. Please feel free to share with this with your aldermen and staff if you deem appropriate. The report includes the estimated completion dates for the major tasks in the project. It is our objective to conclude the analysis and provide a report to the city prior to the city's regular meeting in office. We plan to attend that meeting to answer any questions that may arise. At that time, the city could decide how and in what manner it may wish to proceed. It could introduce an ordinance to implement the revisions it decides to make, or it may take the matter under advisement to allow further consideration, more time for your staff and city attorney to review the final report and draft ordinance for revisions. We realize that we are running behind schedule, but as we discussed, this is a more complicated matter than first envisioned, and it deserves a thorough investigation. Frankly, we understand the time it would take to collect information on and evaluate the recent history of utility operations. This is particularly true for the rate-making and other financial transactions conducted during the prior administration. In spite of the expended effort on our end, we will honor our commitment to complete this work according to the terms of our original agreement. And he went on to say that he sent the timeframes. He's gonna complete his data collection and review on twenty, July eleventh and thirteenth. He will complete the utility system analysis, which is July eighteenth and twentieth. Complete the draft and revised utility orders, July twenty-fifth to twenty-seventh. And he will do the review, uh, study the review with mayor and board board on August the sixth and eighth. So, that's from Mr. Knowles. And I, as I said, I wrote somewhere, one of, one of my, uh, articles might have been in the Medallion, is that this next month, or once we get this, we're gonna have a real good sit-down and establish our rate ordinance for comprehensive for the whole town. It's gonna be public meetings. We want to not only educate the public, but, and also, and educate ourselves, from Mr. Knowles, he's very knowledgeable. He's got good information, he's got some great recommendations on some things, as far as maybe even, uh, averaging out utility bills, which will be easier on, uh, utility customers that have to pay. Uh, he's got formulas to do that, and that's some of the things that we'll be addressing in the future. And it's gonna be sooner or later, so... Once we have these things, we do have excess revenues in our budget, and I'd like for us to prove as it is. And then, once we have these meetings, and we can adjust our, our rates where they should be, whether it's water, electric, sewer, gas, uh, you know, if we feel like we're doing the right thing as far as managing our town and moving into the future. I think this is very prudent to do it this way, and I think this is what it should be done. And, uh, that's where we're at on part of the rates with the town, so...
Given that information, and give the information...
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead. On the, uh, as we think about the budget, if we're gonna have Project Pencil possible, Project Blue, done deal, then I wouldn't understand why, and an increase on our hydro, right? Our hydro fund are increased.
It's gonna increase, but then...
Why would we not, it's a thought I had, and then, why would there not be enough money to do what I said, those two, two budget items? That's why I can't understand if not...
Do you know how much, how much money that's gonna be?
Doesn't matter, it's a figure, it's a guide, remember, that's what all we do, it's a guide.
Well, look, we don't, look, we don't exactly know when they're gonna get operational. I mean, there's some, there's a lot of things that go into place here that you got to figure out. You gotta know when these things are gonna come operational, they gonna be problematic.
I hope within a year.
Well, we hope so too, we hope so soon, I mean, it's...
Y'all gonna, okay, y'all did, y'all did close today, right? So, y'all gonna record tomorrow, right?
No.
I, this been given, the paper's gonna be given to the attorney.
But you said you were gonna close on the twenty-eighth and record on the twenty-ninth, is that what you said?
I said we was gonna, we was gonna sign the deed and the purchase rate, and I might, might have said we was gonna close, but they asked...
So, are we gonna record tomorrow?
I don't know if they're gonna report tomorrow or not, it was, we giving the trust to the attorney.
Heather, do you have it?
No, we're passing it off.
So, we don't have a close and we don't, we don't have a record, like you were told. Because we did get told a record on the twenty-ninth, 'cause that's what we said.
I was just...
Is that what we said, Heather?
That's what we were told.
Okay, that's all, that's all I need to say. Because this budget stems a lot on that, remember what you said?
Yeah.
And we hadn't got it yet, and according to what I'm hearing, we were told something that didn't fulfill the agreement. So, I've got people that have heard that every day out there, about when's it coming, when's it coming, it's a done deal, it's in the paper. And that's, and I said, it's over, we got it, and that, and it still ain't there, but it's supposed to happen today and tomorrow. Okay, that's all I can say.
Deed's been signed and been accepted, deal been signed. It's been transferred over to the, for the future, the next step, for our fund, so... And I understand that from a finding, 'cause I used to do that a little bit. Uh, okay, you was fixing to...
Yes, given the, given the information that, that we have additional information that may affect our budget with the rate study, we need to recalculate the personnel, the personal services due to the change in the overtime and the raise in their pay, and how that will affect, uh, retirement. I believe that we should go ahead and include the rebates, and we take some time to, to calculate those. I make the motion we table this vote until such time as all that information could be obtained, and that we can start the fiscal year with a clear and complete plan of how we are to allocate monies for the entire fiscal year. I made a motion.
May I ask something before we finish finalizing? Even if that does happen, can y'all be very specific on the things that you would like to see in this?
Absolutely.
All right.
Motion's been made, and there's a second?
I was, the second was what? I'll, I'll only employ second. As, as far as tabling the, the budget itself?
Tabling this vote until such time as...
I think there's more discussion, although, I guess now's time of discussion. I have a question, is that gonna be the only thing that's gonna be required for you to get a yes vote?
Well, we can't give a yes vote without the adequate calculations, because if I recall, since we...
I didn't ask that, I asked if we give you that, are you, is that the only, is that the only thing you need to satisfy you to vote yes for this budget?
And the removal of the five hundred thousand capital outlay.
Removal of the five hundred and, and do what?
Remove it from the budget.
Completely?
Yes.
So, don't put any money out there to get a moor, or get a street?
No, what I'm saying is, we need a clearer and complete plan of, if we're gonna, we need a street project plan. We need to know what streets are on rotations to be fixed each year. We need a plan of, of all of these things, not just a five hundred thousand dollar blank check that you make the only decision on. We need, the people of this town deserve to know what is going to be given to them. The employees of this town deserve to know what they're gonna be paying. We need a clear budget and a precise budget that specifically lays out where this money is gonna go. Because if I recall, because we voted for the rebates and... No, no, I'm, I'm talking about the things that we have discussed tonight, I'm not referring to anything that was, was in that email that's on...
Now, are you talking about the hydro rebates? Okay, I have an idea, because it's now past the date that I did the budget and had to have it available. So, I was able to figure out about what it is. I don't want to bring that up, because I don't feel that that's, I feel like it's y'all's responsibility to make that call. Based on the information that you know what it is, it, it's up to y'all to decide, not, not the mayor.
There's still, there's still questions and other meetings need to be held. I don't know how much more I can say, but that's what y'all wanna, I just wanna make sure that we get this information, the hydro information, what else was it?
The retention payment?
The, the retention payment, the, the difference in calculation of the employees' payroll as a result of the switch that they're gonna make.
Right.
Um, you know, the, a, a clear and concise list of what the capital outlay is for. I mean, that's half a million dollars, that's a half a million dollar budget.
I understand completely.
You know, and, and...
Which was not gonna be just doled out on a whim. I don't think we've done anything like that, or anybody insinuated that we've just spent money just to spend money.
We didn't insinuate that, we just... We're trying to put it, we're not insinuating that, we're not insin, I'm not.
Well, it kinda said giving the mayor a blank check.
No, 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 let, let me clarify.
I don't know what she was, but I'm, I'm telling you, we wanted to put in perspective...
Doing it that way, put it in a list form of, of what projects you're wanting to do.
Right.
Removes the ability of anybody saying that you spend it on them. It is to your benefit to clearly outlay what your plans are for this fiscal year, and what you're gonna spend, and where you're gonna spend it, that's to your benefit. To say, we're gonna fix this many streets at this amount of money, and this is our project, and we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do that, that's to your benefit, so that no one can accuse you of that.
I, I don't see it that way, but that's okay, 'cause I, I, I suppose, I would, uh, I would certainly get, if Mark had an issue, that he had to have something to come in, and he would request that, that would be something that we would look at and make sure we had the money for. Because last year, when we gave, uh, each department their capital outlay and put it, put by department, they, some departments went ahead and spent it right out even if the town had the money to do it, which really was not a good way to handle it. So, I would rather put it that it's gonna have to be some type of requisition and approval before they go spend it.
You can put that in place where they can make a requisition, that's your responsibility to say, look, I need a requisition.
That's what I'm trying to, Ray, that's responsibility, to be able to tell them...
You make that requisition, if you're gonna spend that much money, and then you can break back for us if you need more, whatever.
Unless it's something that really needs to be done, it could jeopardize the, the, uh, quality of our water, anything like that, then I would... That's what I'm asking for, is that money there set aside, that we can, you know, if it's something that has to be done, or something can't wait for approval, I have no problem with that.
We always do a special meeting, or we can make an emergency...
That's fine, I don't have a problem with that.
Or you can transfer some funds, y'all really can transfer some funds, correct, Heather?
Okay. That's why I want to do it that way, I mean, I...
But I, I see difference, so that's, that's the thing.
It's, it's up to y'all, how y'all wanna do it, but I mean, come up, you know, each state's department has needs.
You know?
Try to prioritize, and that's what we're gonna try to do, is prioritize what, what's most important.
So...
My only question is, table, what's the next available thing?
Uh, we got, we're gonna change it, you're gonna have to re-advertise.
Just one thing, is, we oughta, we oughta have it, we're gonna table it, you oughta have it tabled.
And we have to wait for that information to be...
And I'm not gonna say I'm gonna pass it next, I'm just saying. I wanna see it, I want the same time you had, you had a year last time. And we, and we kept saying we don't have enough information, we can't make the call. That's exactly the way y'all did us last year, to get us to where we, and I wanna feel comfortable about what we do this year, that's the way I feel. We got till January, till we have to. But I'm not gonna say take that long, but we also have, last year, I wanna make one up statement, last year, we had, note, did you do any concessions to us that you remember? Any concessions on the budget? Did you have any?
Be specific, want to hear it.
I don't know, I'm just asking, do you remember any major concessions you made to us?
I know one thing, we could have all the...
I just said, did you make any concessions, or did we just pass your budget as a part? I think we passed the budget as a part, as a part, no concessions, right?
Best thing to do was a good budget.
That's, legislature, that's your opinion, legislature, legislative auditors told me. Some people at the state level said, most mayors don't get it.
No, I can't, I can't hear you.
Most mayors don't get a, what they ask for. There's always concessions, and we gave you that budget with no concessions, so... I know we did, so, but that's good, that we were having to do, so we wanted this budget...
You were asking for this, and I'm gonna get it for you, but now you're saying that what I was gonna say is, you might say nothing to...
I don't know, that's why I say I want all the information, we'll get all the information, and we'll do this, make our way, make our way to, to work together and see what we need, what else we might need.
Can I get you to come to office?
Nope. We ain't, we're gonna talk out here, 'cause I like talking out here. We talk out here.
Okay.
That's the way it's supposed to be done, and you do know, if you discuss something, you're always supposed to be brought to a meeting as a record, that's what I've learned. Maybe not, I don't know that law, I think it's supposed to be brought into the political realm. But I don't know, but I'm not, just, I'm just saying, that's hearsay.
If we're conducting business...
I don't know that, I'm just saying.
It's gotta be a public meeting, but what goes on in our office and discussions is not public.
No, I'm just saying, if it's, if it's...
Anybody's welcome to come in the office and sit in my chair, get on my computer, come to my table, I don't care. I've asked, and y'all weren't saying no, I'm not gonna, just tell us what you want.
I might come, but I'm not gonna say anything, I'm just saying, I'm not gonna, yes, I'll be there, 'cause I'm busy.
Okay.
All right, there's been a motion to table, been a second. There, on, roll call.
Motion before the board is to table consideration for the Dr. Bud for the twenty-eighteen nineteen fiscal year. Alderman Bets, we know. Alderwoman Doray?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner is absent. Alderman McCoy, yes. Alderman Probst, yes. Motion passed.
Motion made in adjournment, second.
Second.